... they need to build this right now. We got Mr. Christensen on the contract. But the mess that's going on out there at Loggies with that Silver Lions Farm, we don't even want to talk about that right now. This is part of my total dissatisfaction. You know, we got senators involved in stuff out there now because of what they feel the Fire Marshal shouldn't do and they should do this. And I've had calls from representatives out there that Mr. Walker said, "I'm not going out there." Whether or not it's all hearsay, you go right in my face, they're not getting no cooperation with that project. It's huge. There's no doubt about it. It's huge. And they all file a Fire Marshal, but you know, which is not going to see it. It might have done one problem too. It's just we've got to get better communications. Is that, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to table us until the 31st week. Give him a chance to get, do the one more test, make another run at that test. Actually, if you take it six times, was today the 12th, I gave you about two or three weeks. So I think I'd really go to work on that because you do need to get this license. As far as getting back to us, I think that's understandable. When we ask a question, we should at least be able to get some response from you. That's something that you, you don't have to analyze on your own. That we can't dictate that. If we can, if we expect an answer, do we have a specific question for sure, any one of us or all of us? So my motion would be to table this item until August the 31st. Give Mr. Walker an opportunity to take the test, to retake the test, whatever he decides. If it's once, twice, he passes it, the next time that'll be fine. But you need to have something back to it until the 31st.
So that's a, a motion?
Yeah.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second for table and review on this on 31st? Second, Councilman, sorry, for this guy. Call him a favor?
Aye.
Any? Three ayes and a no. Motion passive. Take the 31st and give you. Uh, let's take a five-minute break and we will continue to begin. Uh, we're on item five. Councilman Spirit, Councilman Allworth, discussion only, update on COVID discussions on behalf of the city.
Do you think, Mr. Mayor? We received a border report late this afternoon. Basically, the senators are, you know, we've got all of our earmarks in, in place. They're, they're all out there. It's a hundred senators and we have to go through each one of the market ups we're asking for. But they're going into their summer break or whatever day, they won't be back till mid-September, early September. So we're hoping, going through the political field of this right here, the border group, and the mayor talking to senators when they come to town. And we could be, uh, pass the infrastructure bill. You watch the news, you know, $550 billion, $2,700-page report. Once again, we've got all these projects out there. They can be funded several different ways. We're just going to keep trying and trying and trying on that. And then the latest one that came out was the EDA travel tourism, amount to a recreation grant overview. That's a brand-new grant from Economic Development Administration. And there's the one that's for the local entities to do, the one that the state is mandating. Well, they're going to send a lot of them. So it's real important that Marky will break that either, him and Kyle together. You know, the railroad, the trails around here, this is a good possibility. Once again, it's going to be communicating with the senators, writing letters of support. And our plan, or the plan of the community, you know, the trails we got around here right now coming on. Marky, all the effort of his group, getting the train up and going to start, you know, what, like to start, it's all good. But right now, we're just in limbo. We're waiting to hear. And again, you know, I'm here for Stenon Mello today. We're going to throw all these into the big infrastructure bill plus for the CPG thing. So that doesn't go along to just a matter of wait. Ed and I, the BJ, we express or discuss the fact that Clark County, they get the biggest bunch of the money, no matter what. Clark County, you know, and we're out here in Cow County. We just need the representation. Everybody from Clark County, a lot of people coming here to work here up here, they love our country, our county. But we're not getting the money to subsidize all this here. We want to push tourism. We're going to have to do something about our, our watering sewer. It's going to be maxed out and also we get the big bunch of influx of more hotels and more homes. This is a serious deal. So that's why working with the border group to try to help us out at the Washington level on sewer lines and so forth. We just hope and see some return on investment real quickly. You know, we did make the Horford cut, which surprises, upsets. But the general in Cameron are working hard. Hopefully, we'll hear something in the mid-September.
And I did speak with General Herbert about getting a synopsis on those projects for the project.
Alright, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? Another time. We move on to item six. Councilman Allworth, discussion for possible action. Direct city police chief to conduct a traffic study regarding possible future removal of yield or stop signs at the following locations: Mill Street and First Avenue, Mill Street and Third Avenue, Mill Street Inn, and End Avenue, and to provide the results of that traffic study to the city engineer in order for both officials to make recommendations at the city council meetings following completion pursuant to City Code 6-3-3B.
Pretty well explains itself. I think it was the last administration slapped all those stop signs up. There's three-way stops, there's four-way stops. Good avenue. You come into the side streets, off the side streets, on the, onto, uh... Unfortunately, this should be Murray.
I think you're right.
That this, that, that's all Murray Street, so we can't talk about it. It's all Murray Street. But there's, all the stop signs around Mill are Murray. So it's not, not probably those. Anyway, we'll bring it back to Murray instead of Mill.
Did you have any thoughts on that, Sheriff?
No, I just, I have the councilman explained it. I was just curious what you're going to be doing. That's what I understand now.
Thank you. So no matter how long you've lived here, you always seem to mix those streets up. I know you do all the time.
Will assist you. That's, that's not an issue.
Well, I have noticed you're doing the study on the other street to me.
Okay, great.
That's great.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, I guess there's no action on this.
That's great.
Item seven, Councilman Allworth, discussion for possible action.
Yeah?
Can't hear you.
Run this week? Okay, good. Item seven, Councilman Allworth, discussion for possible action. I will turn the gavel over to the members down for item seven, eight, nine.
Councilman, excuse me. Councilman Allworth, discussion for possible action. Approval of Maupin Cox and L'Goy conflict waiver regarding Maupin Cox and L'Goy's representation of Nevada Northern Railway Foundation, Inc., with respect to all issues involving White Pine Water Power LLC's proposed project near a portion of the Nevada Northern Railway.
I don't know if Chris Danko is on the phone or not.
Yes.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Chris if you can hear it.
Councilman Allworth, you have a first statement.
Not good.
Was this other speaker any better than that walking box?
Not really.
I can't tell which speaker came out of that.
I can hear something did come out, yes.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not real loud.
Yeah.
Have Chris, Chris, try again.
There's no controls on this one.
No, just turn it so you can hear.
Turn it to guys in here, please.
Yeah, turn it to 100, really, seriously.
You're going to get feedback off the mic.
Oh, good.
That's why you get that squeal.
Go ahead, Chris.
Can you hear me out?
I think it's only 200.
Can you hear me now?
That's a little better.
Go ahead, Chris.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Tell him to do a 10 count.
Yes. Okay. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and assuming you will, if the council could hear me.
A lot better.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilman, so Chris Danko, Maupin Cox, and L'Goy. Obviously, a law firm, my representative. City with the foundation with respect to the SNS lawsuit. Probably say the city is a current client of our law firm. And very happy that the city is a, is current client with respect to this matter. I had been asked to engage on it before on behalf of Nevada Northern Railway. There was a question at one time earlier this year, potentially we were going to represent both, the city and the foundation. From what I gather, it seems to be more of a foundation issue with respect for the, for the line on the Adlers branch to head out towards McGill relating to the water project. And the foundation has asked, um, and I don't see any potential even conflict of interest with respect to me. And our law firm just representing for the foundation. And again, looking my foot down on the first page, we're happy to also entertain jointly representing the city and the foundation with this waiver, just to be very, very careful. Would, would enable us to represent the foundation with respect to this proposed water project as you head out to McGill.
I'll make the motion to approve Maupin Cox's L'Goy conflict waiver. With respect to all the issues of White Pine Water Power LLC's proposed project near section to the Nevada Northern Railway.
I'll second that.
I'll second it by Ed Spirit.
You're the one running the same.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Allworth, discussion for possible action. Approval of Fourth Amendment to the development agreement between the city of Ely and Nevada Northern Railway Foundation, Inc., extending the term of the development agreement to January 1st, 2022.
I'll make that motion to approve that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, but yet I want to make a comment. Hey, Chris, how come we're just doing this piecemeal? This is number four. This, this agreement was originally in 2016. Is it something we should be doing annually instead of every quarter? Or why are we doing this so often?
Councilman, we've been engaged, uh, put background, first word is initial three in the term.
Speak up.
And, um...
Chris.
Okay, to, to other matters, we've decided to push this off. Obviously, all parties that are involved in significant litigation with respect to the SNS matter. So rather than spend resources, uh, trying to, to amend this or to readdress the development agreement from July 2016, it seemed to be working okay for the most part. And we continue to extend it, um, now that the case, SNS case has been stayed for almost a year. And we will hopefully have some that the foundation would like to, and this will be the next agenda item, actually kind of, you know, we upped this, uh, the development agreement and that's, that goes into the next item and actually some of the substance of it. But this would just extend it for an additional three months. And to your point, Councilman Spirit, that's something that could be fodder for the discussion of any amended or restated development agreement, how long that, that term's going to be and how often, uh, the parties are going to talk about amending or restating the agreement.
We all understand that litigation takes a long time and take the longer. But anyway, it is, the agenda item is to extend this of the contract at 2022, January 1st. Uh, if it's not done by that time, the question was, can we do it longer once we keep doing this every three months? But gosh knows how long it's going to take. I, I'm not concerned about the January 1st, 2022, other than if we need to do another, another amendment, the Fifth Amendment, maybe we should lengthen it up a little bit. That's all I'm saying. To six months or a year or something. But this one here, we got in front of us and I, I would move to approve this extension.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Councilman Allworth, discussion for, for possible action. Approval of Maupin Cox and L'Goy conflict waiver regarding Maupin Cox and L'Goy's representation of Nevada Northern Railways Foundation, Inc., with respect to negotiating and drafting an amended and restated development agreement between the city of Ely and Nevada Northern Railway Foundation.
Once again, it's up to you, Chris. Run with it.
Thank you, Councilman Allworth. Again, Chris Danko, here in Reno, on behalf of Maupin Cox and L'Goy. Unlike the water, uh, the water project waiver, two agenda items ago, this, this agenda item is a conflict. It does not relate to the current co-representation with respect to the SNS lawsuit. Um, but I believe it's a waivable conflict pursuant to Nevada Rules of Professional Conduct, Rule Number 1.6. Uh, would only engage in representing the foundation with respect to any negotiations and redrafting of the development agreement. And, and this agenda item is only on behalf of the foundation. I will tell the city what I told the foundation, though. I hear Maupin Cox and L'Goy from ourselves and know we were representing solely the foundation for some time before we were jointly retaining with respect to the SNS suit, just as much to the city's council as the foundation's council. We could theoretically just represent the city with respect to this development agreement and ask the foundation to waive any conflicts and have them get other counsel. And representing both at the same time would be difficult unless each one had their own. And theoretically, the city attorney to represent the foundation, if you receive the conflict waiver from the city pursuant to the current development agreement, the city attorney is obligated to give, you know, if you believe there's no conflict, give certain services, legal services to the foundation. And that has happened from time to time. Didn't happen, didn't happen right away after this was entered into in July 2016. Um, but after there was a change in the city attorney position, it, it has happened, um, here and there at times. And so if the council does decide to execute this conflict waiver, which the foundation has unanimously voted in favor to ask the council to do, the board of directors of the foundation, that I would only be representing the foundation's interest with respect to what they would like to see out of the development agreement. The development agreement was drafted in, over, you know, five years ago in July. Uh, it was drafted in June, July, and of 2016, and was executed July 11th, 2016. Um, there's a lot of background running with the drafting and the like. But at this time, I do believe I could, I could represent solely the foundation. This is a waivable conflict. And if there's any other questions, I'm happy, happy to answer them. At all about the development agreement or the process or this waiver.
Chris, this is Jim. Our attorney Leo has some input with, in this, uh, rewording, redoing, negotiating, drafting, amended agreement.
Absolutely. Well, absolutely. That's contemplated. And there, there's not going to be any restated agreement unless both parties agree. That will take a majority of the city council pursuant to a vote. That will take the majority of the board of the foundation. And, uh, I anticipate the city attorney obviously would represent the city and be involved in this. Um, I do have more background, obviously, with the development agreement, the railroad, the relations between the parties. But I, I absolutely anticipate discussing the matter with the, and various ins and outs of potential changes and the like. And so, uh, unless there's a mutual agreement by the parties, there will be no restated development agreement, just like any other agreement.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there a comment?
No comment. I would agree that, uh, a conflict waiver is permissible under NRCD, uh, NRCD 1.6.
So do I have a mo, a motion for approval?
I'll move.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Then move on to item 10. Councilmember City, quickly discussion for possible action. Approval of abatement action to include the removal of licensed vehicles, weeds and debris on private property located at 1405 Williams Avenue, Ely, Nevada.
This property is owned by a deceased person. And, um, we have had no contact from any family members. And the letter was returned, so I recommend abatement.
I totally agree with Rick. We, I, I'd like to buy there at least a couple, two times a week because we have some property compliance after that. I can't believe I've never seen a mess. I mean, I had to go look, I couldn't even find the house, all that crap in front yard. But I'd like to move to, to, to forward an abatement on this property. All second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Careful, it's ordered. Item 11, Councilmember City, quickly discussion for possible action. Approval of abatement action to include the removal of fell trees on private property located at APN 001-411-02, Ely, Nevada.
There has been no response from the owner or compliance.
Just for clarification, is this, those trees are on Orson Avenue? Just west of First, Second Street, whatever it is, the lady, we had the wrong people there?
Yes.
The trees have been removed.
I think one was removed. There's still one.
All of them.
There was still a bunch of debris laying there. I checked again today this morning. I didn't know where was that.
I looked at, there's still one tree, and I seen it too.
Better flag him.
Do I have a motion for deciding?
I motion to, uh, proceed with the abatement.
Motion from Councilman Williams Harper. Do I have a second? All second. Second from Councilman Allworth. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Careful, it's ordered. Councilmember City, attorney for whom discussion for possible action, direction and potential approval of Nevada agreement on allocation of opioid recoveries relating to the resolution of existing opioid related litigation and the allocation and use of recovery proceeds to remediate the harms, impacts, and risks caused by the opioid epidemic to the city and its residents.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Allworth, second from Councilman Williams Harper. Any further discussion? All in favor? Another time. Any opposed? Careful, it's ordered. With that, we move on to item 10. Public comment? Please station to the record. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm very disappointed in the city council, given a wealthy corporation a break like you did. You didn't do it for anybody else. You've never responded to any of my concerns on the building for my properties, my family's properties. At the motel, I was escorted at the city hall four times by the sheriff's office, but I made a payment. When I refused to leave, until they gave me a receipt, the clerk, and then the officer says, you need to pay in full, and it was, it was a payment, uh, in dispute. I paid what I owed. I was there by myself. The property was closed. I either left or I had to go to jail. Trash bags. You folks got to stop the damn discrimination. A corporation like that that did use the water? How many times have I told you? You've got to bring the building back to city hall. You've got to hire qualified people per your ordinance. You're not doing it. You're selectively picking on the little guy, kicking him around. And let me tell you this, I hope one of the senators and the congressman comes here. Because I'm going to talk to him. I'm fed up. There's plenty of records in the Mets, and you guys aren't doing nothing. You're just kicking the little guy around. How many times have I told you? You need staff that's qualified and you don't have? I've given you more than enough information in regards to, uh, this one here, disposing, uh, object vehicles. Some are antiques. You don't have a court order to remove those. There's a law called taking, and you cannot just take somebody's property without the process. And yet you guys are doing it. I've given you, uh, requests for a complete list of properties the city has permitted and approved for RVs. I can't rent my property, yet you sent an officer and give me two citations for $355. That's not going to cut it. If you think that I'm going to watch people all around me rent their properties, I have to listen to, uh, councilmen and commissioners who need housing. And I'm got people asking me, can I rent your property? And I can't do that because I've had to evict an American native. I had to evict a veteran. And I've had to evict a Hispanic and a white person. Why? If you guys have rules, below me, clean up your act. You give a break to the lady with the, uh...
Thank you, George. That's your three minutes.
I want to know how much you collected from those people that have paid.
That's your three minutes, George.
Amusement being taxed, is that, we're going back years. What's the interest on that?
Any other public comment? You're in the room around home. Okay, with that, I will move on to item 11. Uh, German, do I have a motion from Councilman Allworth? Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm on my second one. All in favor? Alright, any opposed? Thank you.
Do we have the litigation again?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. I'll see the rest.
Okay.
I guess not.
Yeah, I know.
What's that?
I'll come and see you.
Done next week.
Coming?
Done next week. So it's planned for the week after. You mean it.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm leaving. This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reported.
George Chatchis reported.